I will now call September 20th when the West City Council meeting is over. Please rise and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any announcements for tonight, but we do have some proclamations. We'll have Chief Gephardt here recognizing Todd Crowder, Glenn Phillips, and Art Hennig. Chief Gephardt, could you please come forward?
Thank you, Council, for allowing us to recognize Lieutenant Todd Crowder for thirty years of service to the city of Fishers. Todd, could you come forward? So, we'll try to get all of it right. I told Todd I was gonna filibust tonight and just keep talking. But Todd started in nineteen ninety-one with the Fishers Police Department. He made sergeant in nineteen ninety-nine and then lieutenant in two thousand and one. He is a award recipient of the Distinguished Service Award and the Meritorious Award. He's an instructor for the department. He's the lead, he has been the lead dive instructor for our dive team, also the lead Evo instructor at times for our Evo team. More notably probably than most of that is his work as the lieutenant of the detective unit for our agency. He has been challenged and his team has risen to the occasion and they've performed admirably on several murder suicides and homicides that we've seen occur over the last half-decade-to-decade. With his presence and leadership on the ground, I'm confident in the result and he's captured many, many of the people involved. So Todd, thank you for thirty years. Thank you for your service. I appreciate you. begrudgingly, Art, could you come forward? I say that because Art doesn't do what he does for notoriety in any capacity. But the most valuable thing a person can give to a community is their time because it's irreplaceable and Art does just that. So recently, Art has been selected as the Golden Hoosier Award by the Lieutenant Governor's Office for the state of Indiana. Art is seen at the police department every day. He helps with our police corps. He helps with our fire corps. He also helps with the Indiana Sports Corporation and he was involved in a lot of the March Madness. So without Art being in our agency, I don't know that we run as smooth. Our books aren't as clean and we appreciate you and you're respected by everybody in the room and the community as well. So congratulations to you, Art.
Thank you so much for your service to our community, for protecting and serving us. Thank you. Moving on to the Finance Committee report, I'll now turn it over to Committee Chairperson, John Weingart.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a couple items on the agenda tonight. Item six, be on the consent agenda regarding the transfer of certain funds. And on the regular agenda, item seven, regarding Sewer Works Revenue Bonds to acquire HSE utilities. Item eight, approving a lease between the Redevelopment Commission and Redevelopment Authority on the new fire station. Item nine, approving a lease on the Redevelopment Commission and Redevelopment Authority regarding State Road Thirty-Seven. Item ten, first reading tonight of our twenty-twenty-two budget. And item eleven, as a part of that budget, the first reading of our twenty-twenty-two salary ordinance.
Thank you for the update. The other update that we have is from the Health Department. Public Health Director Monica Helt could not attend tonight's meeting, but instead provided an update that was distributed to all council members before the meeting, and I'll share with you a few takeaways. The Health Department continues its outreach efforts to the unvaccinated population by continuing to offer pop-up clinics, including at area apartment communities throughout Fishers. Fishers has now seen two weeks of declining case numbers for COVID. Our case incident rates and present positivity remain in red, but they are trending downward. Case incident rates for unvaccinated population remain higher as compared to those that are vaccinated. The Department continues to encourage all eligible persons to get vaccinated. Approximately eighty percent of our eligible population in Fishers has now received at least their first dose of vaccine. Our Fishers vaccination site is ready to resume full-capacity operation for booster doses. While the Department is still awaiting final word on criteria, the FDA voted on September seventeenth to approve booster doses for those sixty-five and older and other high-risk of COVID who had the Pfizer vaccine. The Health Department cannot administer the booster doses until it has further details, which are expected sometime later this week. The Health Department has a communication plan ready. Once the criteria for boosters are decided, the Department is working with area long-term care facilities and have developed a plan for our homebound population to assure booster doses. The Department may be able to offer flu vaccines at other vaccination, at our vaccination sites as well and will communicate more on this when the plan is finalized. The Department anticipates being able to offer vaccine to children age five to eleven around the end of October or beginning of November and anticipates that children under five will be eligible in early twenty-twenty-two. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda tonight. Item A is a request to approve the previous minutes from our August council meeting. And item B, a resolution authorizing the city controller to transfer funds. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cecilia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we have one abstention from six A. Item number seven, zero-eight-one-six-two-one. This is, this will be introduced by Chris Greisel and Lisa Bradford.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President, members of the council for the record. Chris Greisel, city attorney, and Lisa Bradford, city controller. Happy to present second reading to you for the financing of the acquisition of HSE Utilities. As a reminder for anybody who wasn't at last month's meeting, the city has entered into an asset purchase agreement with HSE Utilities to acquire generally all of the assets of HSE within the Fisher service area for a base purchase price of ninety million dollars, which is below the appraised value price of the utility. To date, the city's Board of Public Works and Safety has approved the asset purchase agreement, the acquisition, and has recommended approval of the Sewer Works Revenue Bonds, which are before you here tonight. With respect to the overall acquisition timeline, I want to provide the council with an update and some exciting news to share. Since our last council meeting, the OUCC, the Office of the Utility Consumer Counselor, has submitted its intent not to file any objections or testimony, rebuttal testimony in our proceeding before the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. So the city of Fishers, Hamilton Southeastern Utilities, and the OUCC jointly submitted a proposed order to the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. So what does this mean? We still have an evidentiary hearing that's scheduled before the commission in early October, but with the joint agreement between all the parties participating in that hearing, we don't expect a very expedited process and we're encouraging and anticipating an expedited approval by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. After tonight's meeting, next month, I will be bringing forward the first reading and a public hearing for a rate case to close off this transaction. As a reminder, we're not raising any rates for any sewer customer for the purposes of this acquisition. The sewer rate case will be brought forward because we're incorporating all of HSE's former customers into our rate base. So we have to go through the same formalized process as we would if we were adjusting the rates. So all of HSE's former customers in their district will be coming in to our district to have the combined utility post-closing. We'll have a public hearing at that next month. Notices have been sent out for those and we'll have final reading of that in our November council meeting. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions for your final consideration tonight. So we're pushing for an end-of-the-year closing and that's all dependent upon the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, quite frankly. So all of our conditions precedent to closing have been accomplished or are being accomplished through the local process right now. The Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, their final approval and the timeline for that is the last consideration for that process.
And our utility department will be ready to take over billing all these people?
They are. So right now, Deputy Mayor Elliot Holgren and our utility director Jonathan Valenta are having bi-weekly meetings with HSE to figure out the operational plan going forward for that. So we, we are anticipating a full transaction for the beginning of the year.
And then Chris calls out second reading. What, what is that action we're taking tonight?
I'm asking for your vote.
Okay. So this is a final reading on this item as it relates?
Yes.
There's no more comments?
I have just a couple of questions. First of all, Brad, that's a great question. I was gonna be one of mine. Are you, have the mechanism in place to start collecting revenue when the transition occurs? Really important move. Are there any, from HSE to any deposits or funds or anything that we're going to be transferring over that they've accumulated from, you know, business owners in the community and things that, what, do you have a kind of a list of what's coming over from an asset perspective?
Yeah. So that's a good question. So we do have a base purchase price to acquire the entire asset makeup of HSE Utilities. Included within that are accounts that in the sewer world, we call SDC accounts, availability accounts, that are used for future capital contributions of that utility. As part of our base purchase price, those accounts will be coming over to our utility as well. So we're not just talking about the real assets of HSE Utilities, but we're also talking about those accounts which will come over as capital.
Okay. The other question I have, just to kind of clear the decks on this to get this transaction done, are the representations and warranties any type of holdback or kind of a period where we're gonna be able to claw back if we need to some of the purchase price if something doesn't work out accordingly to what we feel the purchase agreement and the spirit of that agreement is?
Yes. So just like any major transaction, we have right now are going through a due diligence period, right? So we entered into a contract that we've executed with HSE Utilities. Between that time and closing, which we anticipate being the end of the year, we're getting title commitments on all the real estate. We're doing operational due diligence on all the assets and a full inspection. And so we have now until the end of the year to raise those concerns. The warranties that HSE is making to us in terms of the condition of those assets will move forward past the transaction. So they all will have to uphold their end on all those warranties and representations as well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. And lastly, just wanted to thank you two and Elliot and everything you've done to make this transaction up. I think this is really a good transaction for this community, long-term. And I know it's been a lot of work that you all have put in. So thank you all very much for all that hard work.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. The transaction you mentioned, Chris, would not impact consumers' fees. But just to put a fine point on that, in terms of like a schedule, that means like for the next few months or through the end of the calendar year, fees will, we're making the commitment that the fees will remain flat.
Well, yes. So what, excuse me, what we're making the commitment of is that we're keeping both district rates, charges, and tariffs the same. So there is a schedule that we have for our utility, for our current sewer customers. That schedule is gonna remain unchanged. HSE has a similar schedule of rates, charges, and tariffs for their customers. We're adopting that rate base and that schedule wholesale. So those will not change in any way, shape, or form through this acquisition.
So there's no impact to a consumer's cost, right?
That's correct. The only thing that will change is hopefully on January one, they will be sending their sewer bills to the Fisher Sewer Utility as opposed to HSE Utilities. That's right.
Chris, can you just touch on that, like that why this is a positive thing for us to acquire the HSE utility in terms of the longevity and why? Because I, you know, at some point, we will have to evaluate the rates. I mean, not to say that it's never gonna get looked at, you know, but it is a positive thing. But, you know, long-term, eventually, we're gonna have to make sure that we're staying on top of the rates to make sure with sustainability and everything else. So I just want to make sure that people don't think that it won't be evaluated at some point, just to make sure that we're staying on top of our asset with any improvements, any things that need to be done. So I just want to clarify.
Sure, yeah. I mean, with respect to the rates, what we know today is that the rates are sustainable in order to complete this acquisition. And so that's why we're extremely happy and satisfied to be able to make this acquisition of a sewer utility without raising the rates of any customers. Going forward, you're correct, our utility is gonna have to operate and manage itself in future outlook and we'll have to have further conversations as those are warranted.
From a public policy perspective, Councilmember Cobble, I think it's important to note that HSE has raised its rates over the years as they saw fit. They went through the IURC. What will be different moving forward is that residents can petition all of you or whoever's sitting in those chairs when those decisions are to be made on behalf of our residents moving forward. So I find that to be an advantage that you, the residents have a direct venue and an accountability to all of you when those conversations occur. The other thing that I know Councilmember Weingart has mentioned this a number of times, we have a higher level of sensitivity towards environmental issues, whether that's an odor issue, whether that's a noise issue, whether it's, hey, you disturbed my yard when you were working on the utility. That can be a direct conversation with City Hall or with a council member that we can be held accountable. And then ultimately, I think, one thing from a basic financial concept is every time a resident today pays that monthly fee to HSE, that's the equivalent of you living in an apartment and never gaining equity in your asset. Here, we have the opportunity to own the asset and the people of Fishers will have that asset in perpetuity and be able to, at some point, if they want to sell it, they can sell it. If they want to maintain it and keep the rates as low as humanly possible, they are in complete control of that moving forward. So I think for all of those reasons and the fact that we're in a very advantageous interest rate climate right now that allows us to do this without any financial impact on the resident, I think when you add all those up, it's a convergence of really positive, positive circumstances that allow us to make this transaction a win-win for everyone.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to, if I don't mind, I can make a motion to suspend the rules and pass on second reading?
You don't need to suspend the rules. You can just make a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by John. I'll now call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Now move on to item number eight, R zero-nine-two-zero-two-one-A.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, city controller, the resolution before you approves the lease between the Redevelopment Authority and the Redevelopment Commission related to Station Ninety-Seven project. As you may recall, Station Ninety-Seven is for the northeast part of Fishers. As that area continues to grow and develop, there's a need to put the fire station out there. Right now, there's currently what I would term kind of a substation of EMS personnel at IU Saxony. This will be actually a full-fledged fire station. So we've already acquired the land for Station Ninety-Seven through an MOU with HSE schools. And this approval of the resolution will allow us to finance the actual construction of the building along with necessary equipment. So the Redevelopment Commission has previously met and approved the resolution approving the lease with the Redevelopment Authority. The Redevelopment Authority met subsequent to that and approved their resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds. So the item before you is the final procedural step to issue the bonds for Station Ninety-Seven.
Do I have a motion to approve, R zero?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Pete, second by John. I'll now open it up for discussion. Do I have any comments or questions from the council?
The residents of Britton Falls, thank you very much. Since we are having three EMS runs per week in our subdivision, so by having this fire station that close, hopefully we'll do a much quicker job in getting to Britton Falls and all the residents in the northeast.
Well, just to that point, Councilmember Dreamer, just a quick update. I know that we received all of the bids back this last week and we're tabulating all of that. So we should be awarding contracts very shortly and should be able to hit the ground running here quickly. So things are a motion.
I'll now call a vote. All those in favor of resolution R zero-nine-two-zero-two-one-A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Okay, moving on to item number R zero-nine-two-zero-two-one-B. Lisa?
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, city controller. So this financing structure is similar to what I just described for Station Ninety-Seven. So this is a lease between the RDC and the RDA. So the RDC has already previously met and approved the lease. The RDA met subsequent to that and approved the resolution authorizing the issuance of bond anticipation notes or bonds for State Road Thirty-Seven. As we discussed at the Finance Committee, this is the final piece to complete the portion of State Road Thirty-Seven for the below and above-grade interchanges. So based on the schedule, this may not be needed till probably January. As we look out at the interest rate market, it's a great time for municipal debt to be issued right now. Interest rates are extremely low. We're concerned about some potential fluctuations in the market as we wait. So we want to go ahead and get this authorized to be issued. That does not mean that we're gonna turn around tomorrow and issue it, but we just want to make sure if for some reason interest rates start to creep up, that we can take advantage of the lowest interest rate possible. As discussed at the Finance Committee meeting by the Engineering Department, there have been no changes to the most recent update of the State Road Thirty-Seven costs that you guys have seen recently. And so this is a not-to-exceed fifteen million dollars for the project proceeds. As I mentioned, as time gets closer and we hone in on that, we will not exceed the fifteen million. And the estimates, I believe, do account for some adjustments for inflation for some of that right-of-way changes that we've seen throughout the process.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. I'll now open it up for discussion. Any comments or questions from the council?
I have a question. The resolution draft says seventeen million, but you just said fifteen million. So I just wanted clarification on that.
So the process, so if it's a ban, what you do when you do the amount, the amount includes the capitalized interest piece. So necessarily, the project proceeds needed for the project are fifteen. But when you do a bond anticipation note as opposed to a bond, you pay this capitalized interest cost because you're not making debt service payments yet.
So that's defined there when it says maximum principal?
Yes.
Amount as seventeen. So what, what we're considering tonight is a preapproval of a bond, no, not to exceed seventeen million.
Right.
Is that right? I will, this is not like a separate motion, but I would like to make a request if I could, just because this is a preapproval. I think it'd be wise to couple it with a commitment from our engineering department to have a public update to this body before the end of the year, like before the bond is issued, if that is possible. Here's what I'm thinking. The, we have received wonderful, meaningful, monthly reports from the city engineering department about this project, which is a huge project. But those reports haven't been made public and we, this body hasn't received a public update from the engineering department since November. So just to keep everything cohesive and transparent, is that something, I know you probably can't speak for the engineering department, Lisa?
I mean, I, I will let them make a comment. I don't foresee an issue with it.
It's just it's been a while. It's been a while and I appreciate this is like a preapproval. So it seems wise.
I think the logical thing to do would be to have the update post the Hundred-and-Forty-first Street bidding because that's obviously the next information point we would have. I don't know that that's any different than our community or stakeholder outreach or you can share that with whomever at that point.
Let you speak to that. Timing?
For the record, Jason Taylor, Director of Engineering. Yeah, Mayor, you're correct. We could do something that, to the body here, the council, closer to the time of Hundred-and-Forty-first Street and its letting date. We do have a public information meeting that is on the books for November, November first. So I think each of you have been reached out to. If not, then look for something very soon from us. We're trying to schedule that, the, at the Delaware Township or some other local place to be able to do what we've done. The intent of this public information meeting is not as much of the way we've done it in the past where it's our construction update and our design update. We're, we're pretty far into this. It's more of a where we were and tell the story of where we are now and really how we're gonna get to the finish line. And this financial piece will be part of that as well as a big piece on our marketing. So.
So that's it, open to the public?
Yeah, that would be our.
Meeting scheduled November first.
Yes, correct.
So that would be great. Would you be open to just a presentation to this body as, as well?
Yeah, certainly could do so. And what the mayor was talking through and suggesting would be probably what I would recommend as well, the public information meeting, council is always welcome to attend. We encourage it. But then in addition, we can have something on the financial side more detailed around January timeframe.
That, I think, I think that would be wise. And especially since we're taking this action step today and that kind of closes the circle and keeps everything tidy and transparent. So thanks. That sounds good.
Jason, if I may, you know, one thing I think that Mike, thanks for, thanks for stepping up there, would be meaningful for me, and I don't know if it's well the council, is talking about what we've received from, you know, federal, federal dollars and, you know, we, we've invested five million dollar project. It's really a fifteen million dollar project. And what that, you know, how we've leveraged our dollars to get a lot of things done here in Fishers. That would be something to be very meaningful for me to see as a council member if it's, again, it's a well the council. I don't.
I agree. I agree.
Just something to think about.
Yeah, we can certainly.
Because I mean, I, I think if you look at that and what we've been able to do here in the last eight to ten years has been pretty phenomenal.
Yeah, we can certainly put something together related to that.
Just a thought. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll now call a vote. All those in favor for resolution R zero-nine-two-zero-two-one-B, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item number ten.
All right. I'll turn this over to Mayor Fadness.
Item number ten, zero-nine-two-zero-two-one. It's the first reading of the budget with Mayor Fadness.
Thank you, Council President Stoller. And Lisa Bradford, a big thank you for all of her work. I'm presenting the budget tonight, but I'm only a representative of a team of people that have really brought this across the finish line. In particular, Lisa Bradford and Elliot Holgren, our deputy mayor, have led the charge on this year's budget. And I think, I hope you find the merits of. And I think, I hope you find the merits of this budget to be there because I really think it's a very solid budget. I've been working on municipal budgets since 2006, so this is actually going to be my 16th budget that I've worked on on behalf of the town and then the city of Fishers. And this one is especially meaningful to me, just given the context for what we found ourselves in over the last two years. To have dealt with a pandemic, to have challenged ourselves to provide a higher level of service in regards to the Health Department, to deal with an economic turmoil, to make difficult decisions internally, and yet still be able to invest in our community and then to be sitting here contemplating a fiscal year in 2022 where we're lowering our tax rate and investing in public safety and quality of life on the verge of completing so many construction projects and amenities that we think our community will truly enjoy is really an extraordinary spot to be in. And so tonight, I'm going to walk you through this. I am not going to belabor a lot of these points because as you will see, there's been an extensive conversation leading up to this discussion, just to share with you some of our budget transparency, that work that we've done in July 2021, and the city news brief notifying citizens of budget website and public meetings published in the Think Fishers Third Quarter Magazine, letting our residents know when they can anticipate their opportunity to see the budget, to hear the budget, to hear about the considerations that the council's making. We had a special finance committee August 26th. We had another budget update on our website August 2021, or excuse me, August 2021. August 31st, we had a media availability session with Larry and Fishers, the IBJ, The Current and Fishers, and Indy Star and Fox 59 and CBS 4. One of the things that we've done every year that we've done a budget is we actually invite the media in after our finance committee conversations and prior to my presentation tonight, because we want to make sure that the media, where a lot of people get their information, is getting accurate and timely information around something as complex as municipal finance. Finally, thanks to Councilmember Weingard, who chairs the Finance Committee, and all the council members who spent a number of hours. There were several conversations at the Finance Committee, both talking about the broader financial strategy for the city, leading up to our fiscal plan where we talked about revenue assumptions and we did have some surprises on the revenue side of things. And that's why you saw us delay or have a little slower budget process this year. We really wanted to understand where income tax revenues were going to come in. And believe it or not, they did surprise us yet again this year, as Councilmember Weingard can tell you. We were anticipating income tax growth in Hamilton County and it actually showed a decline. And so we're still challenging the Department of Revenue to tell us a little bit about those numbers, but that caused us a moment to pause and we had to readjust. But fortunately, excuse me, we were able to adjust our budget accordingly and have been able to still invest in the community in the ways that we saw fit. So again, you can see all of the additional items that lead us to tonight and even beyond tonight with additional items that we will be sharing with the community so that they have all the information at their hands in regard to our budget. One of the things that I think it's important for you to know, it's, I assume expected that I would stand up here and tout about the fiscal management or the fiscal conservative aspects of our community, given my role in this organization. But really what I'd like to do tonight is share with you a third-party standard and poor's rating that occurred as recently as late fall of 2021. Rating agency Standard and Poor's reaffirmed their general obligation AAA credit bond rating for the city of Fishers. That is the highest bond rating that a municipality can receive and only 2% of local governments actually have that designation. And I'll just leave you with a few quotes here regarding our rating. "The city's economic vitality, sound and forward-thinking fiscal practices, and very strong reserves should enable Fishers to retain a strong credit profile." Another line, "Management continues to implement innovative governing ideas that safeguard Fishers' ability to provide forward-looking services, both internally and for residents." And finally, "Very strong management with strong financial policies and practices under our standard and poor's financial management assessment methodology." This is a direct tribute to not only our council setting the policies for our fiscal management, but also for Lisa Bradford, our controller, and her entire team that ensures that we adhere to those policies moving forward. It's not only the policies that drive us, but it's the way in which we conduct ourselves and the way that we communicate or engage with our residents around our financial matters. So one of the things that we're very proud of here at the city of Fishers is the GFOA, which is Government Finance Officers Association, which I've been a member over the years, Lisa's a member of, that really try to strive for the highest levels of professionalism when it comes to public financial matters. We have received 32 straight certificates of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the fiscal year ending 12/31/19. That regards to, that is in regard to our comprehensive annual financial report. So this goes beyond just our communication to our residents from kind of a general, what are you going to fund, what is our tax rate going to be? This literally goes to the core of our financial matters. You can find any aspect of our comprehensive financial review in these documents and have been rated by a third party to say that they are excellent. On top of that, as we talk about how we communicate our budget and our priorities to our community, something that I was fortunate enough to be a part of back in my early days here, we started sending our budget document out to the GFOA for a review that, and this budget document is where we communicate to our residents. What are the financial means of our city? What are our priorities? What are our reserves? What are our policies moving forward? And can we communicate that in an effective manner for anyone that would want to go seek that information out? And for the 13th year in a row, the GFO has awarded us the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And finally, from a conduct and transparency and professionalism level, the fact that we have yet again received an unqualified opinion from our BKD audit firm, we took the unusual step here in the state of Indiana to have an outside auditing firm come in versus the state of Indiana's Board of Accounts because we wanted a higher level of expertise that could come in and really evaluate how we are transacting ourselves from a financial perspective. And yet again, because of Lisa's team, because of our department heads and our entire team working together, we were able to have an opinion that was a completely clean audit. I thank the councilmember Weingard and the entire Finance Committee for reviewing that and being an active member of that process. So let's get to the actual budget for 2022. In general, as we look at the overall collective budget, we have approximately $100.6 million for the operating and capital, $21 million for debt service, for a total budget of $121.6 million, and a cash reserve of $41 million. I think it is very important to take a pause here for people that may not follow financial matters that closely from a public sector, the $41 million is not in one bucket of money. The $41 million is a culmination of reserves that span all of our funds, and those funds are restricted in a variety of ways based on the revenue that they're collected from. So an example of that, if you have road impact fees and you have a cash reserve balance in your road impact fees, you don't get to go spend that on firefighters or police officers. Those buckets are cut up. So yes, we have $41 million collectively, but that doesn't mean that there's $41 million that you can spend on anything. There are a variety of restrictions in regard to that. But nonetheless, $41 million of reserve is a strong financial position for us to be in. This gives you just an example of our different buckets of money as we talk about, and the general fund being the one that most people concern themselves with. This is where we fund fire and police out of. This is where we fund our parks and recreation out of. This is kind of the general operating budget, if you will. Then below that, you have a variety of funds that are fairly self-explanatory, sewer, stormwater. CCD is a cumulative capital development fund. That's a tax rate up to five cents that we're allowed to collect. It's a fixed rate and that money is used for capital items, primarily vehicles and things of that nature. Motor vehicle highways is a fuel tax that's collected by the state and distributed based on population. And local roads and streets is the same. Some, there are slightly different formulas, and local roads and streets has a slightly different restriction on what you can use it for. So local roads and streets cannot be used for people. It can only be used for things, asphalt, salt, pavement, concrete. It can be used for that, but not our people. So motor vehicle highway, when you guys are looking at the health of that fund, you're primarily looking at how do we fund our streets department and the Department of Public Works? So let's talk about the primary fund that most people concern themselves with, and that is our general fund. This year, we are forecasting, I should say this year as in 22, fiscal year 22, the budget that I'm presenting for you tonight will be a revenue of $68.1 million with an expense of $68 million and a projected unused appropriation of a half a million. This has been something that our financial analyst, Mike Reuter, who we've used for years, always plugs in a half a million dollars of unspent appropriations, which is typically less, it's a very conservative number. We usually don't spend even more than that, but we always plug that number in. Point being is that the budget that I'm proposing for you tonight is a fiscally sound budget that is a balanced budget and actually adds to the cash surplus of our city. Included in this general fund budget is a 4% raise for all employees and elected offices, three additional police officers, eight new firefighters. And eight new firefighters may seem like a lot of additional firefighters, but this is, coincides with the conversation that we just had, the councilmember Dreamer brought up. We're building a new fire station and you can't build a building and not put firefighters in there. And so when you open a new fire station, it's not like police where you can add one police officer at a time. It takes quite a few people to open up a fire station appropriately. So with these eight additional firefighters, at Station 97, you will have a full complement of not only an ambulance, but you will also have a fire engine staff 24/7 at this new fire station. So it will have both fire suppression and the medical folks that we need. And really, in full transparency, long-term, we'll probably have to add some additional firefighters because for all those eight firefighters, while they get sick and they have PTO time and they have things, so over the next few years, we'll probably have to add one, two, maybe three more additional firefighters just to complement or to be able to deal with people taking time off or just the usual staffing requirements to come with with the fire station. Something that I know is near and dear to Councilmember Dreamer's heart, we're promoting two of our part-time inspectors to full-time inspectors, so more boots on the ground, there's a lot more activity out there, and we want to make sure that we have the staff appropriate to meet all of our inspection needs. And then finally, one of the more unique programs that I'm very, very excited about, and it kicked off this year, and I have to say that I'm really proud of our Parks Director, Sarah Sanquest, and Elliot Holgren, our deputy mayor, who worked on this. We have two teachers in residence. So because of the fiscal condition of our city, we've been able to step forward and yet again partner with our schools in a meaningful way. And that meaningful way has a lot to do with our ability to provide experiential learning for our kids. My son was very disappointed tonight when he found out because of the storms, he was not going to be able to go to Richie Woods tomorrow for his field trip, which is a Nature First program that we pioneered several years ago, where every first grader gets the opportunity to go out and learn about environmental science at Richie Woods. And then they get to have some of our staff come into the classroom and help aid the teachers in moving that curriculum along for the students. The schools were so bought into this that they want to expand that to other opportunities. Fourth graders get to go to Conner Prairie for a number of days. Now we have second graders who are going to be going out to the Agra Park. So we have a teacher, a full-time teacher who spends every day at the Agra Park, and every second grader in HSE schools is going to go out and learn at the Agra Park in an embedded or immersive educational program. And then we, we're funding that for the first two years, the first year at a full funding, second year at half, and then the schools will take on the funding moving forward. The other one is a fifth grader. At a hub and spoke, every fifth grader is going to get to go to hub and spoke and learn about science, technology, math, vocational skills, hopefully inspiring the next generation of people that know how to make things, because we're certainly going to need it in the world that we live in today. So the opportunity for us to step forward and invest in those types of things that really allows us to partner with our schools in meaningful ways is extraordinary, especially coming on the heels of what is a difficult economic situation for so many. The fact that we're in the position that we are to be able to provide that service, I find to be really extraordinary and rewarding. This is just a breakdown, if you will, of now that we know we're spending money out of these buckets, what are those areas that we're spending the money on? We are primarily, especially when we talk about operating budgets, we are a people-driven organization. You cannot have a police department or a fire department without people. It's heavy on the personnel side. So it is not unusual to find that we have significant amounts of our funding going to personnel costs. From a per capita headcount standpoint, we still run very lean, but you're always going to have as a percentage, a significant amount of it tied up in personnel. I will tell you that this year, we are reevaluating and have really reimagined our healthcare program for our employees, and we're very, very excited that we have now entered into a contractual arrangement where we can guarantee the costs of our healthcare for the next five years. We've locked that in for the next five fiscal years, which is really an extraordinary opportunity for us to manage that healthcare cost that eats up so much of the discretionary spending for our community. So again, just to talk a little bit more about the investments that are included in my proposed budget to all of you tonight, and we've gone over in detail the departmental budgets and things of that at the, at the last Finance Committee or two Finance Committee meetings ago, so I'm not going to belabor that, but investments in the community at a high level, three new police officers, Station 97 being opened with eight new firefighters. We are doing a key to the city plaza, something to celebrate our heritage and those that have spent so much time and provided so much to this community. This will be a part of the Nickel Plate Trail, and there'll be additional funding for the Nickel Plate Trail activation and programming, additional Makers Playground equipment. So Makers Playground is hub and spoke. That's where we're going to see all these students engaging in fifth grade and teaching them about vocational skills and designing and building things. Pickleball courts, everyone's very passionate about pickleball courts these days. We have a real opportunity at River Glen to leverage some already existing infrastructure, so we're going to be able to fund, I believe it's nine additional pickleball courts. And then when I mentioned that we're having all of these second graders come out to the Agra Park, thousands of them, we have two porta-johns out there. So you do the math on that, we really need to get some restrooms out there for the kiddos as well as the teacher and the staff, so we have a restroom facility included in this budget as well. Some of the reasons that you saw some just general operational budgets go up, frankly, we're not immune from the inflation issues that are out there. There was a time when we were buying gas, Elliot, at $1.10 a gallon. Those days are gone unfortunately, and so our fuel budget has doubled if not tripled. Now, the good news, and I know Councilwoman Newman, you're passionate about this, we are starting to make a number of purchases where we're getting vehicles that are hybrid, so we're bumping that fuel efficiency up significantly, and we're fortunate to do that at about the same time we see fuel going up. So we're going to continue to double down on electric vehicles and different things like that to try to move that forward because it makes sense for the environment and it makes sense for the economy. So we'll be working on that in the years to come, and Deputy Mayor Holgren's in charge of the fleet, so I'm sure he's going to work on that. Electricity costs have gone up and just generally our supplies and safety items for our additional firemen, additional policemen come with costs as well. One of the things we talk a lot about as kind of a general guidepost of how are we doing from a, from a general fiscal perspective? How are we doing from a cash perspective? We had passed a number of years ago, a cash reserve policy. We wanted to make sure that we could communicate to our residents that they would never find a situation where the city of Fishers is left empty-handed. The residents don't have the funds to be able to meet payroll. The residents don't have the funds to deal with an emergency that comes up, a pandemic that no one saw coming, you know, a 2008 or 2009 recession. And so we have always maintained 50% of our future property tax revenue. So if next year we thought we were going to collect $30, that means we need to keep $15 in the bank from a cash reserve perspective. This graph shows you and demonstrates from 2018 to 2022, the amount of cash reserves that we've kept in our cash, in our cash balance. And as you can see, it continues to grow and we've exceeded our requirements. One might ask yourself, well, why, why hold on to that money? Why not just spend all that money? Well, we have had a long history in this organization of saving up, and I know this is a novel idea for government in particular, is saving up cash and then being able to use that cash towards one-time purchases. And so as we contemplate, and Councilmember Weingard, I know we've talked about this in the Finance Committee, as we contemplate significant one-time quality of life investments in our community, whether that's a new art center, whether that's a community center, having cash available to buy down some of the principal of that, because it's a one-time purchase, is an appropriate and good idea, especially as you start to think about and you compound interest over 10, 20, 30 years. If you can buy down the principal of those assets, it's certainly a sound investment. So yes, there is cash reserves in our organization. Yes, we've managed to be able to do that. It's strategic. It's the opportunity to then have the cash and the wherewithal to go invest in things in our community. So given all of this, the investments, the cash reserves, we feel it appropriate to propose a decrease in our property tax rate. Last year, if you recall, or I should say fiscal year 2021 that we're in right now, we were. we were tax neutral. So we went up a cent and the county went down a cent because of the swap in the Health Department, but there was no increase in our operating request to the City Council. We did not come forward and say, please give us above and beyond what we would have otherwise gotten, except for the shift from the county tax rate to the city tax rate for the Health Department. So this year was a tax neutral. In 2022, we're proposing a half a cent decrease in our tax rate. We feel confident that we can meet our financial obligations, that we can provide the level of service that we're talking about, and still be able to reduce the tax burden on our residents. That being said, we still have significant investments on the capital side, so up until this point, I've talked primarily about the operating side of our budget. What I'm talking about here in these slides are all of the construction or investments in those one-time opportunities. So what you can anticipate in the fiscal year 2022, and we broke these into different columns, the first section are things that are going to be built next year. Guy's Greenway, that north-south corridor from almost Exit 210 all the way down to 96th Street, loops through Avalon, down Florida Road, and ultimately ends up on 96th Street. Cumberland Road Rehab, so from 106th Street to 116th Street, that narrow road that we've had for years, that road is going to be significantly improved, and there'll be pedestrian connectivity provided on there as well, which has been a missing link for a long time for those neighbors to be able to get up to 116th Street. There's a $3 million resurfacing program for potholes, you know, maintaining the road infrastructure that we have today. And then there's $150,000 for curb ramp upgrades as well. What will be occurring in design and right-of-way acquisition that's included in here is 106th and Hoosier Road. So these are projects that aren't going to be built next year, but we're going to be actively preparing for construction sometime in the near future, either the next fiscal year, the fiscal year after that. So we'll be designing or buying right-of-way for 106th and Hoosier Road, there'll be a roundabout there, 136th Street widening, so out in Councilmember DeReme's district, that 136th Street corridor that's gotten pretty old and pretty tired, a lot of traffic starting to grow on there. This will provide a brand-new road on 136th Street. 126th Street and Southeastern will be a roundabout, 116th and Allisonville, we're working through the design of that. Oleo and Southeastern, we're revamping that road to improve the traffic flow, because we hear about that particular roundabout an awful lot. And we also have to do a road impact fee study. So if you see those black cables all over our roads right now, we're in extensive traffic count mode right now to understand what the traffic volumes are, and we'll be providing back to all of you a road impact fee study for your consideration. One of the things that's important to note about all of these projects, or the vast majority of them, are that the lion's share of this is federally funded. We've worked hard in the engineering department to make sure that we can pursue as many fiscal opportunities or financial opportunities that we can to receive federal funds. So a lot of these are 80/20 or 90/10 mixes, where the federal government's paying 80% of the cost and we're paying 20% of the cost. Couple other items that will be completed in 2022, Cynthia and Southeastern will be a roundabout, like we said, Guy's Greenway Phase 1, construction underway, Cumberland Road, and then again, this is just kind of a, I guess, for lack of a better term, a regurgitation of what I just spoke about. This is the really exciting stuff, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but just know that we have a pretty extensive fleet. When you start to think about 130 or 140 police officers, seven fully functional firehouses with multiple different pieces of apparatus, a public works department that has every known gadget to man to make sure that they can meet the needs of our community, it's a significant amount to keep up with, and these vehicles are used hard. And we want to make sure that they're safe and that they're effective for our employees. And so you'll see here a pretty significant investment, and this is a routine annual replacement schedule for our fleet. And then finally, just some non-infrastructure things that I think are kind of fun for all of you to be aware of that are included in the budget. Again, the key to the city is an exciting one, two bike-share programs to try to encourage people to use alternative means of transportation, investments in the Maker Playground, that's a picture of the Maker's Playground, if you haven't been there yet, I encourage you to look at it, Lucas Devices for the Fire Department, kiosks for Guy's Waterfront Park, pickleball courts at River Glen, lift station upgrades, HVAC upgrades to our City Services Building, Fire Station 94 and 95, our carpet replacement, parking garage ceiling and joint repairs, and again, the restroom facilities. I do want to compliment this council, in the last few years, on behalf of a number of our employees, I can tell you, they are grateful for the facility upgrades that you have afforded them, a new police headquarters, a new fire headquarters, new fire stations, improvements to the older fire stations. It means an awful lot to our employees to know that you're investing in them and that they have an environment where they can be safe and be effective in their work. And you guys have, every time that we've come before you and asked to be able to do something like that, you have never hesitated to support our employees and their ability to get the work done that's so important to not only our employees, but to all of our residents here in the city of Fishers. In closing, I would just tell you, again, I can't thank all of you enough, I can't thank our employees enough, the city is on sound, sound financial ground. We have a vast array of quality-of-life investments, as well as infrastructure investments, that we have the opportunity to invest in our community, and we have the opportunity to invest in our people and add additional staff to meet the service needs of our community. With that, I will wait till after the public hearing to entertain any questions from our residents and then also answer any of the questions for the council. Thank you, Council President Stolar.
Thank you. I'm now going to open the public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak may come forward. Please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments and questions restricted to the budget. You will be given three minutes to speak.
Hello, Sarah Schmidt, 13053 Fonsbrook Drive in Fishers. Just maybe a comment, and listening to concerns about increasing energy costs and new buildings, and I wonder if you've given any thought with the creation of a new fire station to make it as energy efficient and as green as possible.
Good evening. I'm Janet Dermody Bear. I live at 7404 Madden Drive, Fishers, 46038. The people who work in our city should be able to live here. Fishers has grown rapidly since I moved here in 2013. Many who work in our stores, restaurants, hospitals, medical offices, banks, schools, and even the city don't earn enough to buy a house here. So for decades, I've worked on affordable housing. That was my career.
Ma'am, this section is for questions and comments regarding the budget?
I will have a question.
Okay. Excuse me, we have another section at the end, but if you're going to...
I'm just adding, I'm just doing that as a predicate, so you understand where I'm coming from. This is about the budget.
Okay.
So, and I'll just say, you know, we all know that homeownership helps bring wealth. And so let me just suggest, we have over $40 million in the reserve. And I would strongly suggest that the city consider setting aside 2.2 million of that to help workers in Fishers be able to finance the down payment of their home with a silent second. This has been done all across the country. There are programs that help people have a down payment so they can afford a market-rate house. So we're not talking about a cheaper house, we're talking about market rate, and if we were to put in that much money, we would be able to serve numerous people who are currently looking for housing, because they want to work and live in the same community, and this is the community they're choosing. So I would like to suggest that, I'm more than willing to talk to people about it. I've seen it work, and in fact, I've seen it work for people who lived in mobile home parks that were falling apart, and by giving, being given $25,000 apiece, they were able to move into market-rate homes 25 years ago. Those homes are now worth twice as much as they were worth then, so they gained stability, they gained ownership, and they made a profit off of what they had to live in. So their lives were increased in its stability. So that's why I'm arguing for this. I think it's a good way to use money to invest in the people who work here and provide us with the services that we need. I also have a piece that I can hand out to everybody, if they'd like to see a little bit more about it. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure. Okay, here's the information.
Thank you. Is it an 8:00 PM curfew? Is that what's going on back there? It's the witching hour? Were you guys that upset about the budget?
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak regarding the budget?
Council President Stolar, could I answer those questions and then, so then I can move on to the council questions?
Yes, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Great. I'll have Deputy Mayor Elliot Holgren talk about energy efficiency. He's leading our climate action plan, and Councilwoman Newman, you're familiar with this, but you want to just give a brief update on that, and that is top of mind for us, so...
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate the question, the opportunity to talk about. So we are in the process of drafting our climate action plan that we will submit and propose to City Council by the end of this year, so we can start to take action in 2022. Infrastructure is a key component to that. We'll have five pillars that we're proposing going forward, that being one of them. So as we look at new buildings, your question was specifically to the fire station headquarters. I can tell you, we have our City Hall RFP that just closed, and we contemplated environmentally-friendly components to that and construction work that takes that into account. We have another building, Recreation Center, that also has language in the RFP that talks through that. And I think going forward, any and all City Hall buildings will continue to have that kind of component into it to do the best we can. Lead-certified buildings are fantastic, they're also very expensive, so we have responsibility to manage both the taxpayer money to make it count, as well as responsibility to the environment. So we're working on that, and more to come on that.
As for the affordable housing question, and I appreciate the person's passion regarding that, I'm looking very forward to seeing the results of our study that we're working on, that we've commissioned, we're putting tax dollars towards that to better understand what the needs are in our community. And I would just encourage the council, as well as the community, to see the results of that study, and then we can formulate a policy and agenda moving forward. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Mayor, do you go out to the market and bid your fuel every year?
Well, what, yes. Deputy Mayor Holgren, you can talk on that.
Yeah, we can go out as far as 12 months in advance. We look quarter-by-quarter. If the prices are great, we lock out as far as we can advance. I think we've got six months locked out right now.
Right now.
And we're holding, so summer was not a great time to purchase, so we're hoping for some better numbers here in the future.
Good, okay.
Mayor, could you highlight where we stand on sidewalk updates in the community and really the savings, and then maybe how that impacts our budget?
Yeah, so if you recall, I think it was a few years ago, we came to you and said that we had a backlog of sidewalk repairs that we needed to do, and that we asked to basically create a concrete crew out of our Department of Public Works that works not exclusively, but an awful lot just on sidewalks. And to their credit, not only have they done a tremendous amount of work on panel replacements, but they went out and found innovative equipment that allows us to shave the toe kicks off of those sidewalks moving forward. To give you a case in point, on our best day, we used to be able to replace maybe 12 to 15 panels a day when we had to fully replace those panels. With this new equipment, we can do about 60 panels a day with one person, as compared to the crew. So we're doubling down on those efforts, I will tell you. It feels daunting at times, because there's just so many out there, and these street trees have, you know, they're beautiful, but they have wreaked havoc on sidewalks. And so we're going to continue to chip away at that, but I think we're going to be, we're going to be at it for a long time, and it's going to be perpetual, I think.
Well, and that's what I was wondering, if there was any way, you know, even thought or consideration on the budget of maybe expanding that, because that is something I hear from HOA leaders and residents, that they love it. I mean, it's not, it's not a problem in the sense that we're doing a bad job, we're doing such a good job, there's just a lot of work out there.
Yeah, sure. If I can chime in on that real quick, the restriction might be the actual asset we're using, so we're leasing this piece of equipment out of Canada. There's just not many around.
Okay.
So we've got two guys, three guys are trained on it, but it's one asset that we're able to use.
We've asked for additional, and they just...
Just not there.
They're not there yet, but as soon as we can buy one, we will, because the cost of capital is not that much, actually. It's just, they're in high demand right now. But yeah, if we could get another one, we would throw an individual on that that we have the staff to be able to do and could exponentially improve. So we'll continue to improve the capacity, but even with that, I want to be very transparent in saying, there's so much need for sidewalk repairs that we're going to be at it for several years.
Right. And then with the firefighters at the new station, is that bare minimum, or I mean, or do you feel like you need to have more to get it going? I just want to make sure we're good to go.
Yeah, we have adequate firefighters to move, to open the fire station and be fully staffed.
Okay.
What it comes down to as a collective, as the entire department, they have a certain number of people that can be off on any given day before they have to call people back on overtime. What the chief would tell you is that, long-term, having a couple more people that can literally just float would be ideal, so that we don't have to call people back on overtime. But we're, we'll be just fine opening the fire station, we'll be fully staffed, and won't be any issue like that. It's just, if there's a situation where we end up having four people sick and two people with a knee injury, we're going to have to call some folks back on overtime. We haven't had to do that in a while, but it's cyclical. We'll open this fire station, then we'll add additional staff over the next few years, and we'll get up to the optimal staffing level, so. But no one should be concerned about at 2:00 AM, if you call Station 97, you're going to have a fire engine, you're going to have an ambulance fully staffed.
Yep. And then my last question is with regard to the Police Department, in terms of violent crime escalating in Indianapolis, do we feel properly staffed even with this? To, I know there's great partnership that Chief and the rest of the department is with the Violent Crime Task Force, but I do get concerned as, you know, just visiting Castleton recently in the mall, that it's changed so much in such a short amount of time. They had to, we come with a family, and they tell us, you got to leave right now, we're locking the doors. And I used to work there for years and never had that issue. And so I'm just, I'm just really concerned about that creep.
I think it's an adequate, it's an appropriate question. I believe we are adequately staffed for the time being. I also take a slightly different approach. I mean, I think law enforcement is absolutely needed, absolutely important. I think the other thing that's vital is that we keep our foot on the pedal of quality-of-life, quality-of-place, reinvesting in areas, redeveloping areas. I mean, the best way to keep crime out of your community is to create a vibrant place where there's nowhere for them to hide.
Yeah.
And then I think that, that's where I think these quality-of-life investments we're making are equally as important in some regard, and we will continue to grow the Police Department. We're making investments not only in police officers, we're pursuing grants for additional intelligence agents and different things like that, so we're going to, we're going to stay foot on the gas in the police, but I would encourage all of you too to also keep your foot on the gas and drive in this community to be as vibrant and dynamic as possible, because I think that's equally as important.
Right. Well, great job, everyone, on the budget, and it's exciting to have a tax decrease.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I just have a few comments, maybe a few questions. First of all, I'll just echo what Todd said, too, just really happy to see a tick down in the overall property tax rate. I think that's really important, so thank you for that. And I'd like to also thank the team, I know putting the budget together is quite a project, so thank you very much. Another comment, if I may, the Fishers Health Department, I see from the department breakdown that there's cash reserves of over $500,000 in that fund. Mayor Fadness, I am sure when you decided to create the Health Department, it was not designed to be a moneymaker, we all know that. But I think I would like to see a plan of how that could be invested for public health, and I appreciate our Public Health Department is probably still gearing up, so we don't want to spend that down to nothing, but I would like to see a plan of how to utilize those funds in regards to public health to help our community. Cash reserves, I would like to make a comment, too, about Ms. Bear's suggestion. Just, I am learning about creative solutions to our housing concerns in our community, and I have learned about this silent second mortgage... And I have learned about this silent second mortgage option that is not a grant, not a gift, it is repaid. And I just wanted to make that, that point. This is something to take a look at. I think seriously, as we look at all sorts of creative options, so I'm intrigued by that. I would like to make a request about the nickel plate trail. Is it possible before next month's meeting to have just a fuller breakdown of the nickel plate trail project? What's been invested, what's been planned? It's been a while since we've talked about that and I just think that would be wise to see that. That's such a great amenity and, and that investment, I think is really worthwhile. I'd like to see that. And then if I may, last questions. Our nonprofit organizations in our community are really struggling right now and we really rely upon them to provide great services for everyone in our community. I would like, I believe the budget includes $250,000 in a grant program for our nonprofit organizations and that is flat from last year. So I would recommend taking another look at that. Our nonprofits really could use that investment because they are ready, willing, able, poised to provide the level of additional services that our community needs right now. And then lastly, I do have a question about, I, I thought this year and compared to last, the community outreach in terms of this public hearing was far quieter than in the past. And I, I do think that that is very important to make sure our community is aware of this opportunity. The budget is our municipal priorities. And, and I'm all about getting folks aware of what's being planned for next year. So that's my list. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. A couple of comments. The Health Department, I guess my pushback on spending all of the money that resides there is that we're in the middle of a pandemic and I'd like to believe that we're nearing the end of it and there won't be any additional costs. But they, you know, they say keep the money for a rainy day. Well, it's been raining the last couple of years when it comes to public health. So the prudent thing I think would be to keep those reserves so that if we have to go another round of vaccines, if the federal government decides to no longer supplement us, I think our priority right now is to get our community back on its feet and be able to provide exemplary service there. When we clear that, if there's additional cash reserves and we want to go spend that money, I think we could have a collective discussion about how best to do that. But right now, I really want to make sure that we have the resources available to be able to provide the necessary services going forward. Because I just don't know what the next turnaround corner will be.
And I, if, if I can add, like, this was a great investment from the Health Department, this postcard that went out. And I appreciate that this is not cheap, but this is a really important communication.
I appreciate that.
I understand that balance.
In regards to the nonprofit, I would, I mean, that's a council decision. My, my budget proposes $250,000. It'd be up to all of you if you wanted to expand that. If you were to expand it, likely you would either adjust somewhere else in the budget or you would be looking at ARP funds or something to that effect. That is something I do want to touch on, the ARP funds that are out there. My recommendation to you is not, not to burn a hole in your pocket. I mean, I know there's some money out there and it's about $6 million, 6.7, Lisa? 6.7 million dollars. It's, Lisa will be the first one to tell you, it's very restricted. And secondly, we're in a strong financial position and, and there are opportunities to invest that that can really be a catalyst for the future of our community. So I have not run to you guys to say, well, let's go spend this money tomorrow. Because I really do want us to be thoughtful, because it's not very often that you get 6.5 million dollars. And how can we, how can we maximize the benefit to our residents in, in using those funds wisely? In regard to outreach, frankly, I don't know if maybe the lackluster interest is because we've advertised that we're cutting taxes and that usually doesn't draw a large crowd. But we'll always take constructive feedback on that and we'll continue to do our best communicating to our residents. So thank you for your comments. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments or questions?
Yeah, just a couple. I just, I wanted to, first of all, compliment the mayor and your staff, Selena and John as well. I felt like the budget process, we went through different meetings and at each meeting, we got a little bit closer, you know, over 50,000 feet and then a little bit closer to the ground. So it just helped to be able to understand as, as we got to what you presented tonight. And then the healthcare being locked, that's astounding. So congratulations on that. I don't think that we've had that. It's probably been about, what, eight or nine years ago when we did the internal.
I wish we had. Yeah, that's, yeah, it's extraordinary.
Something that was fairly stable from year to year, which helps you guys plan. So congratulations on that effort. And then the, a couple of other things on the reserves and not bringing this up for Ms. Bear more for the comment that, that you made, Mayor, just to kind of add to that. The reserves are there for, eventually there's going to be a recession. Recession's happened, recessions are natural, and we keep it there for that purpose. And I've been here long enough. I've been through a couple of recessions and it looks like it's a lot of money in that day and age, but when you go through a recession, it's not. So the reason we keep that is a certain metric and I think it's important to have that, both as a town and then now as a city. And then the, the two, two last things. One was the, the only thing in the budget that I kind of noticed was a little bit lower on the repaving, which I bring it up every year. And I think that we're on the same page there, as long as we continue to keep a look at that. As our subdivisions age, that we have the, the appropriate amount of money going to the different repaves, so it helps the each subdivision. And then the last thing that's actually the most exciting to me is actually having the teachers and residents. I think it's great to have kids, not to, hey, there's a park over here, you can go look at it. No, it's a part of your curriculum, so they're going to go and see the Niagara Park. And then more so to me is the maker space. So when you're in fifth grade, that's right before you start that junior high stage. When you start to pick, am I going to go on the college route? Or unfortunately, in America, it's either the college route or the other ones felt like it's maybe a negative and I hate to use those terms. It really isn't. If you go and become an electrician or a plumber or a welder, if we can catch these kids in fifth grade and help them to, to head in that direction, I think this, this helps to do that. And the last thing it'll do is when they're, when they're through with high school and they're in that career, they're going to remember these neat things that the, that did younger and make them want to, you know, live in Fishers too. So I think that's a great, great effort.
Appreciate that.
Mayor, same thing. I, I just want to commend you and your staff. I know you run a lean ship and I'm always amazed at the, the quality of employees that we have, your staff. And just to have that triple A credit rating again and recognition of our fiscal position as a, as a municipality. I just, you're doing a great job. And also I, I feel like your staff also does a good job with matching grants and capitalizing on our funds with other funds that are out there, so good job. My only question was Lucas devices. I wasn't quite sure what that, those are for the firefighters.
Elliot, you want to touch on that?
Yeah, it's a lifesaving device. We have one in service right now. It made a save on an 18-year-old a couple of weeks ago. And so we get three more to put in every ambulance we have.
It's a chest compression, is that correct?
Yeah, it's an automated chest compression device.
Thank you.
First reading. We will now move on to item number 11, 092021A. This will be introduced by Ethan.
Good evening. For the record, Ethan Lee, Director of Human Resources. I'm here before you tonight to present the first reading of the 2022 Fisher's City Salary Ordinance. As a reminder, the Indiana Code requires that the city's legislative body, by way of ordinance, shall fix the annual compensation of each city position. In accordance with the state code, the city has elected to use a bi-weekly salary schedule to establish the maximum salary allowed for each position under the salary ordinance. It should be noted that this salary ordinance is in accordance with the 2022 budget that was just presented, the proposed budget. Any other reflected position, title changes would not themselves result in any higher employee headcount in 2022 compared to 2021. Instead, these changes are really a result of evolving job duties, common industries, title standards. This is really our opportunity to clean up some titles that may be outdated at this point. So I'll read those changes as, as follows. In our Fleet Department, proposing to change the mechanic two and three title to technician two and three. In addition to that, also adding a new position title of fleet technician one. In our PR and Communications Department, we would like to add new titles of community outreach manager and marketing and PR coordinator. These would replace somewhat outdated titles of communications manager and website coordinator. In our Parks Department, updating the job title of agricultural manager to agri park manager to more put that in line with what we are and what, what that is out there today. Our Public Works Department, we have a assistant engineer in our water quality division of Public Works that we would like to rename the Water Quality Engineer. And then Police Department, there is a new title proposed of rank of major. And then also adding the title of Assistant Records Manager in the admin side of, of the Police Department. Our Fire Department, a couple of existing positions that we'd like to move up to a higher salary grade based on the evolution of the, of their roles. That would be the Assistant, I'm sorry, Administrative Services Manager and then also the Community Risk Reduction Specialist. And then all of that encompassed also the 4% increase that's proposed in the 2022 budget as far as salary increases across all those grades. If there are any changes to the 2022 budget, we'll come back in October and make any revisions to the salary ordinance if necessary. At that point, I'm open to any questions anybody might have at this point.
I have a question. Since we're in the middle of buying the Hamilton Southeastern's utility, are we not anticipating that we're going to need to hire any additional staff when we acquire that utility?
That's a great question, Councilwoman Cobal. What we have recommended for this budget is we pass the budget as if we're not buying agency utilities. If the acquisition goes through, then we would come back to all of you with an adjustment or an amendment to the budget that shows the revenue coming in, the additional appropriations, and if there are any additional staff that are needed. I anticipate there will be additional staff. I don't know which specific staff that are, that will need to hire, nor do I know if their titles would be any different than what would be on the salary ordinance. We may just be hiring more. If there's a wastewater technician on that list already, we might just be hiring one more wastewater technician. But we'll bring that all back to you, probably Elliot, I don't know, in the November, December timeframe for, for the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This motion has had first reading. We'll be back before the council at its October 11th meeting. So moving on to item number 12, 02092021C. We have Megan, who has a new last name that I can't pronounce.
We actually, we, we voted that she can't use that last name.
Congratulations.
The new last name is Vukasich.
Say it again?
Vukasich. Vu-cu-sich. Yeah, we can just say Megan. You can, Megan B. It's already changed, so it should be on there.
Well, congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. The item before you is for an annexation of the Covet Thorpe Creek. So you all saw this rezone come through a couple of months ago for a new development that Fisher Homes is proposing. This is out in East Fishers on the east and west side of Florida Road. This is for the first reading and public hearing.
I'm now going to open the public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak about the annexation may come forward. Please state your name, address for the record and you'll be given three minutes. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to give ordinance 092021C first reading? Okay. We have no new business. Moving on to the community comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak may come forward. Please state your name, address for the record and you will be given three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Brent Fields, 8500 East 116th, number 911. I wanted to comment about the proposed budget for 2022. And just highlight a couple of things. Concerned about the increase of revenue and spending by the government. I understand it's a good community. There are needs with a growing community. Some of the figures though, if you add them up over the past several years, there's about a 37% increase in assessed property values. There is a lower tax rate going in, but it's 99.7% of last year's. There was mentioned about issues with some of the things you're doing because of the good interest environment. What happens to property values when interests go up rates in a couple of years? People can afford the payment. The properties will come down. I don't want to get in a position where you're going to have to increase taxes in order to cover a much larger government than we need. I think doing, everyone wants, wants a pay raise, but 4% across the board. I think there's a 3% last year. A lot of people were on furlough last year. Are, are people being paid less than the market? So it's kind of across the board versus, no, this position should be at a higher level or do merit-based. Some of the things seem to be locking in budget increases in an uncertain future in terms of the economy. Other things as far as the taxpayer, again, if you're not selling your house this year, you might not be selling your house for 20% more than it was last year, but your taxes will go up 20%, even if the middle trade is 99.7% of what it was. For some of the spending that's gone on the past, there was an amphitheater that went in here, got knocked down. There's a new one. Couple of years ago in this budget, just talked about the motor vehicle tax. It's about 2.5 million at the time. Talked about how much money that was. It was great. About 10 minutes later, talked about the tunnel over here for the Monin Trail. That was about 2.5 million, which wasn't real much or very much. Well, now it's multiple of that. Highway 37 had to be done, we know it, but we know about those cost overruns. As a taxpayer, I'm potentially on the hook not just as a Fishers resident, but I'm a Hamilton County resident, which will owe the other shortfall. So there are a lot of things that are coming on that potentially end up in our pocketbook and it's bigger government. Neighborhood roads aren't getting paved. 106th Street's paved five times. We want the services that we need, not services that are wants. You know, as I drive home, I'll pass however many drive-throughs, they might all have a value meal. Just because it's value, I don't need to go in and buy it. Don't need the calories and I can keep the money in my pocket. So whether it's a three to one or four to one return on the money, do we, do we need it? I know it's not on the budget for this year, but the community center being talked about. There's a lot of private businesses that do that. Is it where we need to go in and provide a service that isn't being provided or provide competition? And it actually ends up subsidizing the use of that kind of material versus what would be provided. So I appreciate that. Did have a question on one other item that was on the budget or not on the budget. It was related to R. 092021B regarding lease redevelopment. And it talks about being the State Road 37 project, but there was amendment B that refers to Allisonville Road between Eller and 116th Street.
So you need to be wrapping up your.
Yeah, so with no idea what exactly that is.
It's a lease.
It's a lease, that's why you have to lease an asset. So all, it's mentioned as a leased asset, because it's a lease by any contractor, that's all it is. You have to lease an asset of valuable value. So we lease a road.
You're, you're leasing Allisonville Road?
We lease the road, yeah.
It's a, we could, we could talk offline, but yeah, it's a standard practice in regarding issuing debt. You have to have an asset or a piece of collateral. That's the equivalent value in order to provide this lease. And so we lease other roads. How we provide to the state's action regarding it?
Good evening. My name is Dana Colbert. I am the Hamilton County Democratic Party Chair. I am also a resident of Fishers and tonight I want to speak in regards to that in particular. I also do want to. Um, I also do want to thank the Health Department for offering a pop-up clinic at my residence, which is 12187 Windsor South Drive. It's the Sunlake Apartments. So, one thing that I have been looking into as not only the county chair, but myself as a minority in this city, both as a black woman and as someone who does not own property, is looking at the diversity and the makeup of specifically the boards and commissions. Um, earlier this year, Councilwoman Ver raised a concern about this, and I've been attempting to look into this since June. I submitted a public access request, um, be- it was June 9th, to really begin to dig into this and try and look into this and look into the things that she had cited before. And I received this roster in full this past Friday. So, I do appreciate, especially with Lindsay Downing and her work to get me this request, but I am disappointed that it did take three months for me to get this request and only get a portion of what I requested. It is more difficult to be able to dive into the transparency because there are some people who have the same name across the city, so it's hard to see exactly which person is on there unless I can make it to all of the boards and commissions. And I'm one person, that's not something that I can necessarily do with a full-time job as well. But that said, uh, it did not seem like there were a lot of updates from when Councilwoman Ver raised the issue of diversity. So, I would like to reiterate those recommendations that she made and to restate them. Those would be to swiftly perform a formal complete audit of all the board and commission appointments to identify the overall composition and representation. The representation would include gender identity, race, religious beliefs, political party requirement adherence, especially in regards to a new update to the state statute that'll go into effect on January 1st. The number of terms served, the number of boards served on, and the conflict of interest declarations. Also doing some more outreach via the social media channels to deploy a call-out to Fisher's residents, inviting them to apply to these boards and commissions. And also highlighting that we are looking in particular to expand our diversity. Performing a complete poll of all the applications that have been received in the past two years, and also requesting that current appointees who are up for reelection, reapply. Forming a nominating committee to review the applications and determine a slate of appointees for your consideration. Majority caucus selecting two members, minority caucus selecting one member, and then codifying these procedures at the next city council meeting and making sure that they're followed each year. Right now, it's October, there are a couple of months left in this year before the upcoming reappointments at, uh, with some terms ending in January 2021. So, I wanted to restate that at this meeting and request a, an update on any progress that has been made in any of these areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Abraham Wondergem, 16331 Lower Valley Drive. I'll be very brief this evening, thank you. I wanna thank you councilors, and I wanna thank the mayor and his staff. Uh, the Firehouse Project on 136th Street is very important. I was just making some notes here. There's gonna be 17 communities out there, quote, "communities," neighborhoods, that are gonna be served by that. You did your job, you did it well, thank you. But I do have one question this evening, and it's for Councilor Kreisel. With the acquisition of the Hamilton Southeastern Utilities, four years ago, we had a meeting at Britton Falls. I live in an area which is a huge racetrack, and they drive like it. And the thing of it is, is there's only one exit in and out. We had a meeting at Britton Falls, your zoning director at that time came out, and we tried to have eminent domain to take an extra lot from the developer to make an extra access. The solution was they were going to, Hamilton Southeastern agreed to build an access road, an emergency access road, 'cause there's a bottleneck. And if, and if that gets blocked, you know, we're in trouble. Fire, ambulance can't get through. So, they're just finishing up now, taking out a, a lift station, I believe it is, putting in a sewer line for a connector, and I noticed that, oh, what they've done is they've just sodded everything, they're, they're spreading grass and sodding. I see no evidence of that paved access road. Uh, Mr. Kreisel, if you could, when you talk to those people, see whether or not they're going to uphold their end of the bargain and pave that road for your city.
Absolutely.
All right, fine, thank you. Well, again, thank you so much. There are 17 neighborhoods that are gonna sleep a lot better in the future because of your actions and your actions. And it's nice to see a government that actually does care about its citizens and takes care of the people. Uh, you turn the television on, we don't see that on a national level. It's great to see it here in Fisher's, Indiana. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. For the community cons- comment section, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Pete, do I have a second? Second.